And we'll call at this point, everyone is here except Commissioner Kenward and Commissioner Dorsey. And hopefully they will be here. Item number one approved with the previous minutes.
All in favor say yea.
Yea.
Well, the purpose of our work session today is I was talking to Mr. West and Elston about how we're gonna staff James Oaks Park. What kind of budget is it? And let's have a work session and talk about it. We're grateful to have the rec board here, those members. Thank you for all you've done. I know many of you have been serving the rec board for a long time and have waited for these, this moment and these moments for this park. So we're grateful for your service. Bob Hendricks, CBB, we're proud of your hair and of course Rob with the hotels. We invited everyone involved to be part of the discussion. Normally it's just the commission and the staff, but this is a big project which affects a lot of us and we want to invite everyone. So we'll go ahead and start. Remember, we can't make any decisions. This is a staff recommendation, talk about it. We obviously can have a lot of discussion. We will end up voting on this budget at some point, probably next month, right Mike?
Yeah, we wanna do it at the next meeting so we can go through the process that they take, you know, a month, month and a half to get everybody hired. And they're gonna turn it over to us. In fact, they wanna turn some of them stuff like the fields over to us now.
Yes.
So anyway, we're hoping that the contract is finished by first of the year or most of them are working on the plan for this now. I just remind y'all, when we did the budget in the summer of two fifteen, we did not fund anything for James Oaks Park. There were questions of when it would be done and things like that. We did fund Andrew Bell and the Westgate approval. And there was discussions at that time about the potential for raising additional hotel taxes, which y'all have done. And so Elston and those are gonna make a presentation. And like I said, we need, because there is no appropriation for when we take this park over, we need y'all formally vote so we can amend the budget to be able to do what we need to do to start maintaining it once it's turned over to us. So Elston, I guess you're on.
Okay. I'll stand for a minute if you allow me to drive while I'm sitting, I will. But good morning and thank you so much for this opportunity to present James Oaks Park and park operations. It's our goal today to point out what a beautiful park we have and what in addition to the inventory that we already have, this park is gonna bring to the table. And what we hope to do in this presentation today and if you're bad with us, we'll run through it and at any time you have some questions, feel free to stop me, but I'd like to go ahead and go through it and then once we get through it, we can go back and entertain the questions. So again, we're here this morning to talk about and to present to you, and please forgive us, everything is still in rough stages. The park is not complete. Now we'll go ahead and say this, we were out, met with the architect and the contractors, I think it was last week, and at that time, they said we were still looking at about six weeks to finish this project. And that's without Mr. Meeker going behind the fence people and we wanna get this right the first time. So even though they may walk out in the next six weeks, we anticipate finding some things that will need to be fine tuned once we get out there and once we get concessions, equipment and all this stuff in place. So with that being said, that would kinda give you an idea of what type of, what type of a timeframe we're looking at before the final product is out there for us to consider a lot of the things that, a lot of the things that we will bring out today. Of course, staffing the world-class James Oaks Park, and we do feel like it is indeed that for years, of course, I'm a thirty-six-year man, a lot of people didn't know that, but for years, the city of Doakton and the Department of Leadership has kinda led the way for all of the rec departments in this area. We have state soccer tournament this weekend. Dan Smith, who I respect, the rec up in Troy, came and just boasted about our parks and rec facilities, how he still feels like we have the best of what to be had here in this area. Okay, next slide please. What I wanna do here for those, and I know this plan has been out there for a long time, is just to point out the magnitude of the size of this. Once you compare it, of course, to some of the other facilities, you may say it's smaller, but if you look at this, what we have here, and if you allow me to use my notes, what we have here in this slide, and I wanted to be able to point it out, but my laser pointer would not point out things on here, but what we have here, of course, is eighty-seven acre park, six regulation youth baseball fields that are here, six regulation youth softball fields there, two large control buildings, one that sits in the middle of each complex here, and then two smaller control buildings that sit here in front of the, the small buildings. We also have included this eighty-seven acre, one-point-four mile, uh, one-point-four mile walking trail, playground and pavilion, a two-acre detention pond, you can see the pond there on the top, five-hundred-and-fifty-eight parking spaces, seventy-five trash cans that will be located throughout the park that we will be responsible for, thirty-two raised plants, and you'll see those, flower plants, you'll see those as we move forward, two-hundred-plus trees throughout the project, sixty-four picnic tables and numerous landscape areas that will be responsible for, as well as the main entrance there, both coming off of Taylor Road and coming off of, uh, Kelly. Next slide. And this is just to confirm what I just said, so you can see it there. Of course, we talked about playground and pavilion. And I didn't mention on the previous slide, the main entrance coming into the park there on the Taylor Road side, we will have what we're gonna consider a pretty nice-sized playground and picnic pavilion there that will be open to the public when the ball park is on the table. We've had some concerns about people being able to utilize things in the park, so we wanted to make sure that Mr. West agreed to it, that we would put something where people could access it when the park is on the table. And again, those are just some of the things that I just talked about. Next slide. This will give you an idea, these are actual shots that Kelly made out at the park this week. We take pictures and then they make changes, we go back and change those, but this gives you an idea of the, the plants that are located behind twelve of the backstops. We have twelve fields there, each backstop will look like this, there's a grass area to give you an idea of grass that will need to be cut on the inside of the complex as well as edging, watering, fertilizing, everything that you have to do with grass at home, we'll have to do here. Next slide. This will give you an idea of what the plants we talked about a minute ago. And we have thirty-two of these throughout the complex. That's combined girls and boys. Now just to give you an idea, what this does, you'll see in some other slides here, how this comes into the scheme of things, but we have thirty-two of these. This is what we call the plaza area, this is the girls' complex. You see a lot of the concrete. This area here, we are hoping that people will stand around, sit around, the ballgames are going on, and utilize this area. We have nothing like this in any of our other parks. Next slide. We talked about the number of picnic tables, sixty-four, and you'll see in a minute where they're located. These are dusted, you know, we haven't had any rain since June, you go out there, everything is just under dust, but this gives you an idea of the number of picnic tables and somewhat how they're located, and I'll point out later exactly where these are. This area here is intended to be a playground, so you will have picnic tables right there where you can watch the children play, and to the right of these tables are the two lower fields at the girls' complex where you can actually sit there and watch ballgames that have been played on the field down below. Next slide. And Kelly, Kelly took this picture here, we wanted to give you some idea, and what we're talking about here is what it's gonna take to maintain this park. When we get to the end, we're gonna have a number of staff people that we are requesting, but this gives you an idea of the type of landscaping that we're gonna be responsible for cutting. And this is just a small portion up at the girls' complex. This is the top here, we'll show you that a little better in a few minutes, where you have the four fields, and of course, down below, you have the two. But that is a large grass area there between the two that staff will be responsible for. Of course, again, this is a unfinished version of that part of the park. Next slide. I wanted to point out here, the walking trail. This is a one-point-four mile walking trail. Of course, you can see the lights, it's lit trail, nice decorated timed lights throughout. The trail size and width varies, and width, in some areas, it's eight feet wide, in other areas, it's as wide as fourteen feet. That gives you an idea, this, this part of it here comes around the backside of the boys' complex, and that is a pretty nice-looking retaining wall that we put, put there. Next slide. What I wanted to do here was to point out the jobs that are required to maintain this park at the standards that we currently have set for all of our facilities. And we broke this down into three categories. We have turf maintenance, facility maintenance, and other jobs. And I won't go through this entire list, but you get an idea of what we're talking about upon turf maintenance, mowing the grass, weed eating, edging, blowing, dragging and chalking, you know, for your ballgame field preparation. As it relates to facility maintenance, we're talking about clearing restrooms, which we have two large restrooms in each control building, we have restrooms in the school boxes, we have restrooms in the maintenance shop as well as the house. Of course, meeting rooms, school boxes, all of those things, staff will be responsible for maintaining. Other job responsibilities, the staff would be supervising, of course, we have a field supervisor at night that helps with controlling the crowd, making sure everybody's safe. We're also responsible for concession stand at the girls' complex, where we have to bid concession items, we have to purchase material, we have a personal secretary that we're going to request for, that will be responsible for the payroll, all of the accounting processes, and everything and things like that. Next slide. Wanted to give you a snapshot here of our maintenance checklist that we expect out at James Oaks Park. We broke this down into four categories, what has we done daily, weekly, biweekly, and quarterly. And I mentioned earlier, the number of trash cans, like I said, some seventy-five throughout the park, just imagine having to empty seventy-five trash cans each day, but not only the trash cans, but the plaza areas and all of the areas where we are hoping that people will patronize the concession stand and of course, leave us a lot to do there. Mowing the ball fields two to three times a week, edging the interior, and these things are just around the plaza area inside of the complex. Of course, the things that we have a small ashtray by will be things that we would definitely have to do when we're playing ball, tapping mounds, home plates, bases, repairing our fields. Of course, Phil, I think you can imagine that little six-year-old kid that let me write field, this is all he's got to do. He's not gonna get a ball there, so he's digging, that's every day.
Some outfield did that for twelve.
Yeah, twelve years, but anyway, you get an idea of what we have to deal with in terms of maintenance. So it is required that we check every field, keep it loaded and out here, lower the interior, drag and rake, rake it, skippin' weekly, weed eating, edging, biweekly, edging infield, and we'll show you a little bit more about that in just a few minutes. Quarterly, of course, it requires herbicide application, perlite application, and grass steps, and I'll give you a shot of what grass step look like in just a minute. Next slide. And that's show the grass step. And this is one of the fields at James Oaks Park, and this did not come from Google. This is one of the fields, show you kinda what the condition of the grass is. Of course, we have sprinklers running. These are some of the things that we will be responsible for doing during the off-season. Of course, a lot of this stuff won't need to be done the first year because we have a brand-new facility, so we don't expect to have to do any painting, but down the land, we paint restroom, we paint dugout, we paint all of the interior sides and the school boxes and school booths and those kind of things. But wanted to give you an overview of the things that we're responsible for during the off-season, of course, general cleaning, and Bob, I don't know how long the off-season will be, because we are expecting to come in and do a lot of things that are during the timeframe that we would normally consider to be off-season in relation to regular Dixie youth baseball and Dixie youth softball regular schedules, insect control, oversea, cutting and laying those kinds of things. Next slide. What I wanted to point out here is based on last year's schedule, the Doakton Leadership Services softball league played a total of two-hundred-and-six ballgames last year during the regular string. We played on Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, and Friday night. We average anywhere from eight to ten games per day. The Doakton American Leaguers is the baseball program now currently at Dub Two, played a total of two-hundred-and-thirty-five games. They played also on Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, and Friday night, averaged ten to twelve games per night. This does not reflect postseason, this is just regular season. And what we did, we kinda did the math, if you add up the number of kids and the number of parents, which the number of teams that we are suggesting that's playing is around three-hundred, and if they both draw, each, each, play about two parents, that will give you six hundred, so that's about nine-hundred, and nine-hundred and nine-hundred in each complex, so we are estimating about two-thousand visitors in the park every night we play ball. We're estimating around two-thousand visitors, that's in the baseball and the softball side. And with that being said, you can imagine half of those people drinking a Coca-Cola and dropping the cup, eating a bag of peanuts and dropping a thousand of, the magnitude of what staff is gonna be responsible for on a day-to-day basis to make sure that restrooms, ball fields, dugouts, concessions, everything in the park is acceptable, not only to my standards, but to your standards as a patron that come there. I was telling Mr. West, when we clean, we don't clean our standards, we clean to your standards, because we know you expect when you get there to have a nice, clean, safe facility. Next slide. Wanted to break things down here into man-hours. It took us a little time to kinda figure this, but we wanted to give you an idea of the number of people that's really required to do this job, and the number of people that we are requesting at the end of this presentation. Just take for an example, regular season game preparation supervision, man-hours. We figure forty-six man-hours per day is actually what's needed to do what we think is responsible to make it a safe, acceptable place to play. And I'll just take the first one for example, watering, thirty minutes a day, times twelve fields. Now this is not throwing the switch and the sprinklers coming on and staff standing there waiting thirty minutes. Each field will have a pop-up sticky where you all that's played baseball before, the staff person will actually stand there with a hose pack and wet the area and prepare it to rake, rake out and drag the field for game preparation. So this thirty minutes is not outfield, this is mainly infield application that we're talking about here. And if you estimate thirty minutes per field, times twelve fields, then that gives you some kinda idea, that's where we get the six hours here that it takes, man-hours just to water the field. And of course, you can look at the chart and see the other items that we have this today, like raking and drag, and the time that we estimate is going to take, times twelve. So this is just kinda give you an idea of the number of man-hours that's required to do these items, to water, rake, drag, pack bounds, chalk fields, clean and install bases. And when we added, when we took the forty-six man-hours and we divided that by eight, eight-hour workday, it came basically to five-point-seven-five, and we round that up to six full-time employees. So it would take six full-time employees to accomplish this daily task right here, based on the way we have it. And bear in mind, that's a perfect day, no rain, nobody calling in sick, we don't have any emergency somewhere else in the, in the, in the park system where we have the pool of people, things like that. So this is another perfect case scenario where everybody's showing up to work on time, it didn't rain, and to give you an idea, sometimes, you know, you get up in the morning, and it may rain at twelve o'clock, and then at one o'clock, you got birds chirping on the fence, and of course, you know, we gotta get things ready. So of course, the process will have to multiply in terms of how fast we do it and the number of people that it would take to get that done. Next slide. We went further here to break it down into man-hours per week, and when we calculated it out, it came to about seventy-two man-hours per week. And again, this pie chart just kinda depicts how we broke it down. We'll just take one for an example, over in the fields, we estimate it's gonna take about forty-five minutes to move, to move a field, and we multiply this times twelve, we have twelve fields there. Troy Jones, our turf expert who's here, ready to handle, suggesting, and this is based on what we do at the complex, you all have been out to the Westgate softball complex, estimate that we're gonna have to do that about three times a week, and of course, it may be two some weeks, some weeks it may be four, that may vary depending on the grass and how fast it grows. So if you estimate about forty-five minutes to cut these fields, times twelve fields, three times a week, that gives you this twenty-seven man-hours that it take just to cut ball fields. Just to give you an idea, and if you go around the chart, you'll see exactly what we're talking about as far as the requirement of staff and the number of hours it's going to take just to get these fields ready. Again, we took the seventy-two man-hours and we divided it by forty hours a week, and it came to one-point-eight employees, we rounded it up to two. So it actually takes two full-time employees to accomplish this seventy-two hour work week, as we have the boarding fields, edging fields, boarding interior islands, weed eating, raised plants, irrigation maintenance, et cetera. Next slide. Weekend tournaments, tournaments expected staff. We estimate that average weekend tournament requires twenty-eight additional hours beyond the standard work week. Also, it will require six people to work a single complex, with at least one of those being a supervisor. In conclusion, a weekend tournament requires one-hundred-and-six to eight man-hours beyond the regular work week. And the twenty, that would be twenty-eight hours times six employees to give you that. We estimate it's gonna take six employees stationed at each complex to take care of tournament needs. And the way we came about the twenty-eight hours based on Troy and his experience with tournaments, that first day was around sixteen hours. You're talking about starting in the morning, six or seven o'clock, and walking out of the door, ten-thirty, eleven o'clock that night. That's on a perfect day when you have no rain, no storms, anything that would interfere with the flow of the day. So again, in addition to what we've already talked about, man-hours that's required, additional one-hundred-and-six to eight man-hours is required for tournament opportunities. And Mr. West and I talked, of course, like if you visited Westgate this weekend, we have state soccer tournament, we bring in staff from everywhere. If you go there, you'll see people that normally work at Westgate, people that work at Eastgate, people that work at Andrew Bay, we even have central office staff there. So when we have a tournament, to accomplish this, to I guess complement the regular staff that we have at these facilities, we will have to bring in additional staff to make this happen. Of course, every time we bring those in, the, the, the payroll increased and we spent a little bit more money to do it. But the goal here is to bring tournaments here, to staff the fields to the need, if we have rain, anything that happens, we'll have enough people on hand. We typically put one person on each field to supervise, to be there, to make sure that the needs are met on each field, and that's where we came up with the six employees, because we have six fields in each complex. Next slide. Now, with all of that being said, that I just said, all of the man-hours that we talked about per day, all of the man-hours we talked about per week, all of the grass cutting, the islands, the blowing, the edging, the pesticides, the herbicide, all of that, only talked about twenty-four acres in the park, twenty-eight percent of the entire park. We haven't even touched the other six to three acres. We have only been talking about twenty-four acres. With everything I just said about the man-hours that are required, all of that had to do with the athletic areas, the playing areas, the concession stand, the plaza around there, the picnic area, the, the only thing that we talked about, we showed a picture, the walking trail would be outside. But now, outside the twenty-four acres contained in the complex, there's another sixty-three acres to maintain. So we just expressed, like I said, we want really you to see the scheme of how large this process is. The twenty-four acres that we just adjusted down, the sixty-three acres is what's left after we do everything that we talked about. And then that sixty-three acres, you have, we talked about it earlier up at the front, the picnic pavilion and playground, one-point-four mile walking trail, I talked about the number of parking spaces that we have, with the additional fifty-one parking spaces that are up front where you're coming off of Taylor Road, the maintenance barn, the two-hundred-plus trees that are all brand-new, I'm not sure exactly when the warranty runs out on those trees, as far as the nursery being responsible for those, but after that point, staff will be responsible for maintaining all of the landscaping, all of the trees. Of course, we purchased the house there on Hamilton, the house will be used for the office, similar to what we do out at Eastgate. The roundabout there that's on Hamilton Road, that's gonna be a nice area, the landscaping area that can be delivered, the staff will also be responsible for, and there are just tons and tons of common areas, and you'll see that shorter, that the staff will be responsible for cutting. Next slide. The staff that we requested will be requested as park manager, a recreation supervisor, a recreational leader, secretary, two utility workers for part-time regays, for seasonal regays, and two field supervisors. Now bear in mind, with this staff requested that, we get these people here limited. When school is going on, we only get these people after school, and it may be the case with some of the part-time people. Also, our sports supervisors, unless they have jobs where they can come in and help us with maintenance, not only are these are the people that walk in at game time, they walk in at five o'clock, these are the butterfields that you see standing around Dub Two, they're standing there to make sure that everything is run, everything is safe, and everything moving and organized better. So I said that to say that you really can't count on these six positions here all of the time that we suggested that we have man-hours where we need people working. And again, we're prepared to do whatever we need to do to make this park successful. Next slide. projected annual operating costs, budget for this project, salary, fringe benefits somewhere around four-hundred-and-twenty-two thousand, three-hundred-and-seventy-five dollars. Operation supplies is another three-hundred-and-twenty-five thousand dollars, and out of that, we take our janitorial office, repairing maintenance, small tools, all of those things that will come out of the budget, printing, rentals, if you have a need to rent equipment, if to make repairs, a lot of times we, we have to do that, but that's the budget that we are requesting. We have no idea going into it if this is not enough money, if this is too much money, but in talking to the finance department, they estimate that the hotel taxes will bring you approximately nine-hundred-and-seventy-five thousand dollars per year. Next slide. If you total up the salary and fringe benefits and the operating supplies, and then what we have tried to price out at this point, startup equipment, this is all the equipment that we're thinking at this point that we're going to need to cut grass, to blow the edge, to trim, to do all of the maintenance that we just talked about in some of the previous slides. So we're looking at somewhere around two-hundred-and-fifty-four thousand, two-hundred dollars, based on books that we received just last week, to be able to purchase this equipment. Now bear in mind, this two-hundred-and-fifty-four thousand dollars may not be needed every year, but we definitely need it on the front end. We're gonna have to buy tractors, we're gonna have to buy trucks, and all of the things you see there in order to maintain James Oaks Park at a level that we expect to maintain it. Next slide. And of course, our goal is for this facility to be a statement and a showplace for the city of Doakton, and this is one of the fields, again, this is not Photoshop opportunity, this is one of the actual fields out at James Oaks Park, and you see the irrigation is running, but that just lets you know, just a small snap, snapshot of what's to come and how beautiful and the impact that this park is gonna make on this community and this entire state. We just feel good about this being something, again, I said earlier, that I've been here thirty-six years, and I've never seen a complex in my thirty-six years that is as nice as this complex. this complex and different than anything that we are accustomed to here in Doakton. Next. Okay, right now, if you're about with us, we're gonna show a quick presentation, and this is gonna give you a bird's eye view of everything that I just talked about. Kelly, you go ahead and start, and I'll see if I can dim the lights a little bit.